Today is February the 1st, 2018. And I'm over in Quitman, Georgia, and I am George Boss to ride with Get to Free Press. And this is Quitman Town Hall Meeting in Citizens' Right to Know. And this is why we are here with the old Ag Building in Quitman, Georgia. And we report what others ignore. We ask you to tune in to Boston GBR on YouTube where we report what others ignore. Because under our form of government, you have a right to know. If our sons and daughters can fight on foreign battlefields, then surely we should have free newspapers and free presses that will tell the news in our beloved community. Now, get ready, get ready, get ready.
... I'm anticipating having, I'm going to allow our team there as a council. And this is our first step, you know. We heard those problems and we want to address them head-on. And we want you to know exactly where we are and what relief that we possibly provide. With that being said, our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do I hear motion to adopt our agenda? Ms. Maddie Ellen, do I hear a second? Let me hear Robbie Christian, question. All in favor? A little closer. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is utility billing, software updates. You know my stance, you guys can see me, okay? This has been one of the concerns that we heard early on from you guys. And it's a problem that we, as you know, this council right here just came into effect on January 1st. So, the billing went out prior to us coming in and they went to a new software. The new software is kind of in the trial basis right now. It changed the look of your bill. You got your bill, a lot of people complained about some information that had previously been on there that's not on there now. We heard your concerns about that. And we have gone back and we've met with the software company. So, the new bill that you get out will include your previous meter readings, the date it was read on for the last month, the current meter reading and what day it was read on, your usage, and the number of days in the cycle. That's some information that a lot of people said they wanted back on their bill. I can understand too, I want it back on my bill, but it's back on there. Another concern was the new software system broke your billing out and seemed like you're paying for things that you hadn't paid for before. It's always been including your utilities for your light bill, but the new software, because it has codes, and when you do accounting later on, it has to break it out into different codes, and that's why it broke it off. Some of it on your upcoming bill will be put back together, consolidated, so you won't see as much, but I think it'd be user-friendly, you'll understand a little bit more. Now, it will have on there your garbage, your electric, your sewer, and your water. The number of units you use and the total bill will be on there. I'm looking at the new bill, they used mine as an example to point out. And the current bill that we just got this last month that had on the bottom, it had kind of a graph, I think, of from your previous years. I don't know if this one didn't print it on here, but I'm hoping we're gonna check on that tomorrow, but it puts it back. Is that something that you guys like having on there to look over? Didn't matter? Feedback on that? Would you, you just really want to know what the meter reader was and what day it was read? You guys will support things?
The graphs.
The graphs? Okay. We're gonna see if we can have them put the graph back. Well, this one didn't come back, but we'll, I'll talk to them in the morning or have Mr. Burns talk to them and see if we can have that put back on there. But if not, that's one thing we'll still be working on adjusting. We want to make sure you get all the accurate information about your billing so you understand.
Now, ma'am, ma'am. So, a lot of people don't understand that word now.
Okay. If that's the case, if you don't understand your billing, come to the office. Mr. Burns, I should introduce you to those that don't know. This is Mr. Willie Burns, he's our city manager. Come to the city office, he can explain to you your breakdown of your bill. If you have any questions about that, just come up to the city hall office and you'll explain that. The next item of update I need to tell you about, we were informed in December that we're coming up with a new billing system and we're changing over meters for gas, water, and electricity. We were told that it was gonna take effect in July. That's what we were, the council was understanding of that. After coming in, in the last couple of weeks, meeting with the companies that are coordinating this, it will not be July, it'll be closer to November, only because they have to do a study first, which takes two months, they have to get the information together, they have to purchase equipment that's designed only for Quitman, send it off, get it calibrated, then come back. And what's gonna happen is instead of doing whatever, roll it out eventually and do like gas first and then go back, whether to do your water and do your electricity. So, we've changed that system. When they come to your house one time, all the meters that you have that read to tell what utilities you're using will be changed out at the same time. It will be computerized, so it will be controlled from the central office, from the administrative office, and they have the capacity at any time you want to know that month what your bill is already running, they can log it in and they can tell you. There's a component that might be coming, we're not quite sure it is, that might be allowing you to do that at home, that you can pull up if you log in, where you can monitor yourself where the bill is going throughout the month, you can tell about your usage. But that's something we hope down the line that we have that component added. But hopefully by Gen, excuse me, November, we will have it computerized, we'll have new meters, because a lot of the complaints we hear too are about the old system we had. It hasn't been updated, but this will be a massive update. We want to update the system, so we know that we're getting accurate billing. That would eliminate the guys having to go out and do the meter reader and transpose with the books and the numbers, because it'll be computerized, it'll just fit right into the main computer and things like that. Also, it would give the city the capacity at any time, if you're delinquent or something were to happen, they push a button and everything gets shut off. So, you won't have 10 million people coming in and out of your house and door, things like that. So, that's the capacity of updating. We're gonna get modernized and computerized, and hopefully we'll go live online and you can check your bill. We have bill pay if you want to pay online and things like that. So, it's just to make the customer, make it more convenient for you on that. And then our updates are coming with you? Thinking of it now? Okay. These are just some of the things that we've been working on that was started with the previous administration. We're trying to complete it. Also, another thing somebody wants to know about is that with the drive-through window. I know it's been inconvenient, it's been down for several months, but those of you that didn't know, the city office used to be a bank in those years, it was probably the 70s probably. And the equipment is outdated, the drive-through window went down, and the previous council voted to repair it, but the equipment that needs to be used to repair it with is on backorder. It's kind of hard to find, but it's on backorder, it's been approved, it's coming, and we will have a better drive-through window. And as soon as it gets here, we're getting that going, so you'll have that service also for that. Next on our agenda, we've got an open. We've kind of given you the updates where we are as far as the way the bill looks and things like that. And the purpose of the meeting is to hear from you guys. I know that it's enormous light bills and things like that, but I want to hear from you guys. We've got a sign-in sheet, and what we're gonna do, we're gonna be kind of systematic with this. If you're on the sign-in sheet, you get your time to come up and talk, limited to three minutes. Remember, this is an open forum discussion. It's not attack anybody, get personal or anything like that. If that happens, you're gonna be axed a lead. This is just information. Let us know what your concerns are, we're gonna take into consideration. And our job is to see what we can do to better serve you. We're here to serve, to serve you, but we need to keep it civil. You know, we have concerns. If you have a personal issue about your personal billing, it's not generic, it's part of bill of the general, you're gonna come to the city office and speak to Mr. Burns. He's the only person in the city, not us, that's authorized to make any kind of payment arrangements or do any kind of, anything with your bill. So, if there's a problem personally about a bill or payment, you need to make arrangements tomorrow or sometime to see Mr. Burns, sort of that. We as a council, what we do is, we regulate the rates and other little things, administrative type things, but when it comes to bills and things like that and collections, that would fall on Mr. Burns and his staff. So, at this time, we're still taking names up until we got five more minutes. Who's got? I'm gonna wait on this and I'm gonna call, and you just come up and I think this mic is on, and you just speak freely. Remember, time constraints and...
Are you first?
Oh, you were putting it down like you were first. I'm sorry. We can't though, we can't start. No, we have Ms. Gladys Dodson. Oh, you're... Ms. Gladys Dodson? And I'm gonna sit down and I'm gonna go call, you just get the text. You just speak to us or we're comfortable standing that way looking. I don't know, I'm standing beside, I guess I could do that or not. Are you lying? Whoa, whoa. I just...
Okay. I live here in Quitman, and I purchased some land at a tax sale in 2014 or 2015. I did all the proper paperwork to get the land title and deed it over to me. Then, I received some tax deals from the city of Quitman for like three or four years of arrears and taxes. And I want to know, is there any way that maybe when you do the county taxes and the city taxes, that we can pay them at the same time? Because I always get my county taxes, I've never had a problem. I didn't own the land, but it had went up for taxes, looked like the city office should have been made aware of it too, and that at that time, they could have tapped on whatever taxes were due on that particular piece of property. So, I don't know how to put what the answer to that is, but if you could look into that and to see, and I don't know if it affected anybody else, you know, what kind of plans are being made so that if you're stuck with four or five years of back taxes, how can we address, how would you address them?
Mr. Dodson?
Campbell? I'm sorry. I do know my name.
I think I can address that, Ms. Dodson. Part of the charter, which is our guiding set of laws, is that we are responsible for tax collection. It would be nice if the county could do it for us, and if they did, it probably would be an extra fee for it, but we're gonna look into that. There's been a lot of complaints about that as far as tax collections and things like that, and I think now, Mr. Beatty, we have an agency that's been hired that's gonna help us get this back on track with that, if you'll be patient with us on that. But it has been for a while a miscommunication between the county and the city doing it, and we're gonna try to get on the same timelines and get it easier and make it easier for everybody. And that's another thing too, when we get up and go on our website, that your tax information will be on there. When you log into your account, your tax information can be on there too, when you can keep abreast of what's going on. But that is a problem that's been brought to our attention recently, and we're looking into other avenues to make that more user-friendly and keep you updated on that. Thank you. Mr. Preston Micky? Mickens?
Good afternoon. I came up tonight to give the committee. I've been working with the city of Quitman for 35 years, checking everybody's water system in their house. I make out a bill, send it to the city, and they reimburse the people for their water. If it's bad, I fix it, and they are knowledgeable, I signature it. No other signatures that will come up there if my name is not on it. And the city was okaying me, and everybody here, not say everybody, but lots of people here, they love me. And when the city got a problem with somebody's water, they'll call me and tell me what's their problem is, and I will fix it for them. And that's, it's not on bill on the city, it's on their property owners. So, that's what I wanted to get up and into the board, the commission for that, so, you know, and see if it's gonna still work the same way.
I don't see that changing.
You don't see it gonna change?
Not as long as this guy, the billing on it.
Right.
And then you come up and say, "Mr. Burns, I'm the guy..."
Right.
And then it's got your signature on it.
Right.
You must be a plumber, right?
Right.
Because I don't see a problem with it.
Okay.
Because the board says that, well, in the agreement, it says that as long as you, the owner of the property where you did the work at...
Right.
And produce receipts.
Right.
We work with you on that one.
We can't hear that.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Come on, pass it.
I'm good. I'm good. Okay, the policy has not changed. If you get your water pipes fixed, you need an adjustment on your bill, that has not changed. That has not changed. If you get him to do it, we're fine with it. As long as it's got his name, Eric's signature on it, we're fine with it. And show that it's been fixed. So, if you get a plumber to do, even if you did it personally, as long as you show me a receipt that you bought plumbing supplies to fix your, I ain't coming out there looking, checking behind everybody. But if I could see where you losing water, right? Our policy says we doing the adjustments. So, thank you. Come get you some. You could've came and saw me. But I'm gonna do that. Thank you, gentlemen, okay? Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mickens.
Thank you.
Mr. Holwell Rice?
I thought it was Mr. Sign-In Sheet. He didn't need to speak. But this young lady wanted to take my place.
Okay, Carolyn.
I'll tell them pretty loud. My question to the council and to the city is...
You hear your... My question to the council and to the city is, when we have road issues and they're well-known, how can we get them fixed? I mean, in a timely fashion? I know that there are LMEs out there, I know that there's a process, but especially on Webster, the road is really bad. The buses use it a lot, and it's just tearing up more and more and more. So, that's a big question with the buses coming through on Holly Road, Dry Lake Road, how can we get that fixed?
I'll try it, Alan. We do get LME grants, which are funds from DOT, and we could use them on our local maintenance improvement grant for that thing involved. Webster Road in particular, it's, you know, it's got a lot of potholes on the western side of it. There's a water main that's under there, and every one of those holes you see is a leak. And so, we've gotta go in and redo the water main. It makes sense, either move it out from under the pavement or completely replace it. And so, that's kind of where that's been. We don't have, we don't really have a project set up right now to do the water main replacement so that we can come ahead and do the pavement. That's something that we're having to work to, because West Hill Street is the same way. If anybody here, if you live on West Hill, you know, this guy bump, 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 and it's, this water leaks, and it's terrible. So, that's what's the holdup on Hill Street as well. We just have to target those areas as we get to them. The paving is very expensive. What you've seen that we've just done, you know, was about $156,000 from the state. The city doesn't have, the city matches that with a little bit of about $35,000. And that, that's about all we can do each year. Now, we do have a ongoing program. Every year, we apply for LME. We've got a list, I believe now, that's been worked up for the LME 2018. And I think we'll be, we'll be working towards that. In a few months, we may see some more come down from DOT. And they disperse the funds at their discretion, even though we apply. So, it's kind of as it comes, we get it and use it. And that was one of my things, I think we had gotten to a point where the city street from worship is Eric, and I've lived here all my life.
Especially with the buses on that road constantly.
Yeah, and you're right, they're up and down, so that will need some importance. That's something that we've talked about working with the state on to get some additional assistance with them in the past, because that road does take such a beating. But that's the answer to it, is we're, we're in every, we're in every grant program we can beat for paving. I mean, we've applied, we're in everything we can do, and the city's making our matching parts available. We've got ours, but it's, we can't do it by ourselves. So, that, that's the answer. If you'll look, a lot of those have water leaks on them, and that's what makes Webster so terrible. It's got that water main that's just coming apart.
So, do you foresee fixing that?
Well, that's something that council's gonna have to look at some of our next projects. We do have a Jeepo grant that's just been approved for us. The city has a grant of $300,000, and that's earmarked to do these water meter change outs. And then we've, we've received a word that we've been approved for a loan, which is another, it's a long-term, I can't quote it exactly, but I think it was 20 years and a very good interest rate. And we were earmarked to use that to redo well, number one, the city has a well that is almost inoperable. We've gotta get that back, build a shelter over it, do some fluoride, chlorine buildings so that we can make it water usable. And a lot of that money has been earmarked for that and also for the water meter change app. So, we can see, you know, where we're going with that, but that's, that's just, that's a lot of money we'll be spending in the next, in the next year, and it'll take us over a period of 15, 20 years to pay it back. So, but, but I agree with you, Webster's one of the worst, let me just say that.
Another point, Carolyn, too, is that if you live in an area and your road is unsafe or it's impassable or it's dangerous and something that's immediately come up, contact the city manager. We do have some resources that we can send somebody out right there. It's not a long-term fix, but it'll at least take away the unsafe conditions that are there. So, you've got, if you have a situation where weather or something happens and causes an unsafe situation in your neighborhood and your roads or anything of that nature, please call the city hall and speak to the city manager, and he can send somebody out to assess it, and then we can see what we can do from there. We don't want our citizens, you know, living in unsafe situations.
Also, on that corner, they've been dug out with fire hydrants, and it's just open and it looks as if it's getting to be very unsafe again, because they have the big barrels there. One is in the ditch now, and every time I go by, I pick it up and put it back, but there to again...
Which corner?
On the corner of Webster and Dry Lake.
Webster and Dry Lake.
Yes, they, they will work on that fire hydrant. And I keep putting the barrel back, but it keeps getting in the ditch, and they're getting closer to the big tube that's there protecting that. So, that's, you know, part where the buses turn, you know, so it's an issue.
Thank you. We'll, we'll pass that on and have that listed. Thank you so much. Next, we have... Tanya Brooks?
I can hear you. What's your...
She's... She's...
Thank you.
Oh, you're gonna meet with her? Okay, all right. Thank you. Ms. Maggie Wade?
My question is, on North Coast Street, no, not North Coast, North Lee Street, when I lived on South Coast Street, they always hate mow the city. So, I want to know why they don't mow the city all that's out of town. Oh, oh, that, uh, Lee Peddler Truck Show down the street there? They're gonna mow it, and I've been there, I've been here for 12 years. And I went and talked to Danny Herron, probably two years now. Anyway, he promised me that they were gonna mow it, they give him that next week, next week I'd see him. So, I told him, shook hands on it, I told, I went back and talked about, "You lied to me. You said you were gonna do it, and you didn't do it, you didn't keep your word."
Man.
Sir.
What's your phone number?
It's on the page. 460-1351.
What's your house number?
305 North Lee Street.
I'll see you in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Ms. Toni Brinson?
Mayor, let me, let me... I'm this kind of guy. If you got a, a issue, if you got an issue like that, a road, call me or come to the office, okay? I'll even bring my, Dennis there. Dennis not here. I will come to you. I understand your complaints, okay? I'm a I, cross the T guy. So, you come to me and we'll handle it. These are my bosses. If you ain't happy with what I did, they will fire me, okay? So, I'm here to, to address these, these problems you're talking about. So, just starting tomorrow morning, just call me or come by the office, and we'll go right after, we'll put London's there. Or contact London, okay? Everybody okay? Okay?
Good afternoon. He may have addressed some of my issues. When I called, I called the city a couple of weeks ago. I have a house and it has a water line problem. And I asked if they would send someone out to check the line, because I've had two plumbers out there, and they tell me it's on the city side, that the city needs to come out and clean out their line, and they need to mark the main water sewer. I called in, I spoke to the young lady, she said, "Ms. Toni, we'll have somebody get back with you, we'll let you know when it's done." I'm assuming it's not done, because I've not heard from anybody to say that it's been done. So, that's two weeks, and the water is backing up in my rental house. So, the people...
Did you call and ask for Mr. Burns?
I'm afraid I didn't know Mr. Burns. I called the city and I spoke to the person.
Well, I understand what you're saying. Tomorrow morning, just call and ask to speak to me, and let me take your, your issue.
Okay, thank you. That's what I said, I thought you probably answered. The other question I have is about...
What, what, what answer is this?
514 West Stewart Street. The other question I have is stop signs, uh, street signs. You can drive through Quitman and you don't even know where you're at.
Thank you.
I mean, you, you don't even know what street you're on. Ask the street if it's south side. And if you're new to the area, I had two brothers who moved here, and they're constantly getting lost, because there's not a street sign to tell what street they're on. I have a house that in the county is known as 800 Blair Street, and in the city is 800 Webster Street. So, when my tenant asks me what's her address, what do I tell her? And we have one street that has three signs on it. It, I mean, two signs. It has Martin Luther King Avenue, and it has Washington Street. Now, there's only one street name that should be up there, why does it have both street names? That's my issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brinson. Is it Mark Faulkner?
Good evening. Most of y'all don't know me. I've lived in Brooks County probably 15 years. Lived in the city of Quitman less than a year. My experience is so far with the city of Quitman is this, the guy that comes out and hooked up the cable TV, booyah, on the box, there and at night. A month later, when cable TV sucks, and you ask him to come turn it off, booyah, he's out there that night. No problem with any of the city services, except, I just want to say this, the staff that you have at city hall causes you folks a lot of problems, it causes you folks a lot of problems. That is the most unprofessional office I have ever been in in my life. I have had the pleasure...
It is displeasure.
I have had the pleasure of working for city governments, county governments, and state governments. I know from experience that the people that you folks need to be looking out for is these folks. When you have somebody come in to city hall up there to pay their electric bill, and they got a complaint about what the rate is, and they get giggled at by the office staff, they get laughed at by the, and I'm not talking about me, I'm just talking about other folks that I've been seeing in the office. complaining about something and getting laughed at. It is very unprofessional. I don't know who runs that office, I got no clue. But I know that is not the way the government should be treating the people. If somebody's got a complaint about their electric bill, they should be able to see the last six months of meter readings on their place and if there's a, if, I mean, if the meter reading is right and you gotta pay it. But if it ain't right, there ought to be an answer for that. I myself have not had a problem up there. But I have, every, every month when I go up there to pay the bill, there's somebody up there that's got a problem. And it never seems to get resolved. And that's really all I got to say. I don't have any real complaints about the city equipment. It's a small town. We don't have a whole lot of money. We can't fix everything this month. I understand that. So I kinda see both sides of it. But when people have a legitimate problem with something, it ought to be addressed. It ought to be looked into. Somebody ought to take a few minutes to see if their meter reading is correct or not. If it's correct, then they gotta pay the bill or their lights gonna get turned off. That's the way that is. But if it's not correct, it needs to be corrected. Now, I don't know about this rate increase and all this stuff, what you guys got going on. I don't know. I know that's a big job and I know there's not a lot of money, there's not a lot of people, there's not a lot of time. I understand all that. My only issue is if somebody comes into the city hall up there to pay their bill, it ought to be addressed on a personal level. You ought to take their concerns to heart because it's important to them. It may not be important to y'all every day, but it's important to them when their bill is fifty or seventy-five or a hundred dollars more than they thought it was gonna be. And that ought to be addressed. And I just wanna put that bug in your ear to let you know. That's just what I've seen when I go up there to pay my electric. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner. These are some of the concerns we heard early on. Like I said, we've only been there thirty days. These are some of the changes you'll see very quickly. They're being put in place by Mr. Burns. We're retraining our office staff, you know, we're working on professionalism. If you have complaints from now on going out, please direct them to Mr. Burns and he will address them. Like I said, we're here to provide a service, you know. We're elected officials, they're hired staff and we're providing the service and we're gonna be courteous with it. We don't want anyone to leave there. You will not have personal information discussed publicly. I think there's a sign up there now that indicates if you wanna have a private conversation, that that will be provided with you at any time. Like I said, we're, we're working on that. We really are. Keep us abreast when there are issue comes up. Mr. Burns is not out there in front to catch it all the time. If you have an issue, there's a way to do it. You know, we have a new system. And I think this would be a good time too to give you a little heads up. We had a call meeting on Tuesday and we as a council decided that in order to be a better service, that we each need to become familiar with the different area in the city as far as the service that we provide. And so we have decided that we are gonna head up committees. And we'll have a committee where if you have an issue, you can bring it to that committee. You don't have to wait to come before the whole council. You discuss it with that committee who in turn will investigate, get all the data and all the information that's needed and provide it to us as a council as a whole with recommendations on how to proceed. For instance, if Carolyn came with this road issue, that would be public works. The chairman of that committee is Maddie Dellows. She would in turn either get it to the city office, but they would in turn get it to Maddie. Maddie would call up her committee members that are on that committee and they would talk about it. They would come up with some recommendations and bring it before the board at our council meeting. You would be notified of that and participate in it if you would like. And we will make a decision from there. We think by mainstreaming and doing it that way, we can divide up and we can make sure that we're listening to you guys and we're hearing what's going on and we're trying to get some kind of solutions. That's, that's the whole thing for that. And that will be posted soon and you guys will have access to that. We're trying to work on our website, getting up and really being functional now so you can tap in and see what's going on and be abreast as to who you need to contact. You know, we're trying to get avenues so you do feel as though you have a voice and that you're being heard. And we'll have a system where not only will you register a complaint, but somebody will get back with you and let you know what the resolution was for it. So work with us with that. But we've got some great ideas from this council that we're gonna implement. And, and like I said, time takes change, but it's gonna be positive. It's gonna be positive. Thank you. Next we have...David Razzini, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have just a couple of suggestions and this deals primarily with the energy issue that we're faced with. I realize that with the power issues, we have to pay whatever the rate is and and I, I don't feel that the city's trying to gouge us by overcharging on the rate. But the, the thing that we need to focus on is using less energy. Right now, we're faced with big power bills. I haven't seen mine yet, but I had three people come by the store today and said theirs was just over the top. And I expect mine will be the same. And if it would be possible to take the two big months that we have here at the first of the year and instead of we, all of us paying the full one hundred percent back to the city, let us defer twenty-five percent of the bill to maybe March or April. We'll pay the, pay it, but we defer part of our big bill to the months that we're gonna have low energy costs. And it would help everybody. Some people can afford to pay it, the full bill upfront, but there's a lot of us that are retired and we can't do that. So I make that as a suggestion. If there are few times during the year, if the citizens would be allowed to defer part of the bill to a month of the energy use, it's much less. The other thing that I would suggest is how can we use less energy? I had a lady come in the store the other day looking for a water heater. And I said, "Well, there's places just around here that you could buy a water heater from." And she said, "Yeah, I found one and it's two hundred and seventy-five dollars." It was a used one. And I said, "Well, for that price, you could probably go over to Balassa and get a brand new one, you know, for a hundred dollars more." And it was the energy efficient. Bottom line is she didn't have the money. That's the same all of us are faced with when we have problems. A lot of the homes need new windows. When we put in heating and air systems, we patch what we've got. And all we're doing is patching out-of-date energy devices. If the city would take some of the money that is invested in CDs, which are not paying the city really any interest to be bragging about, but if you would take part of that money, set it up in an energy program. If people who need to buy new heater, air, then they can borrow the money from the city and pay it back over five years or seven years at an interest rate of five percent. Five percent, that'd be more than we're gonna be getting on the money in the banks probably for the next, well, I'm sure Mr. Devane could give us a clue when we'll see five percent interest on our money in the bank. But I don't believe it's gonna be anytime soon. And so an energy program is something that would help us. It would allow us to save money. When I go to buy a new air conditioning unit or fix the broken one that's out of date already, I'll say, "Okay, I can afford to buy one. The city's gonna loan me the money. I'll buy a good, energy-efficient one." And I have several units in my buildings and I can tell you, the energy-efficient ones, I put one in three months ago and it cut my utility bill by seventy-five, seventy-five dollars a month. Really, it makes a big difference. So that's something I would suggest. And the last thing is I would like to see the city council be proactive in the downtown business district in regards to the faces, the facades that are on the building. We have buildings in our downtown area that don't even have a face. I mean, they're just boarded up and some of them pushed in, broken panes of glass facing the street. That is not an attractive business district to people visiting our city. And we need all the help we can get. And I hope that the city council will find time to address that issue too and help us get those people motivated that own those buildings, to get them motivated to upgrade the fronts of their buildings. I don't care if they have something in the building, but as long as it's pretty front on it, it does not look bad to the people coming into our town. One of the worst areas that I've seen is Five Points. Everybody know where Five Points is? It's a historic corner here in Brooks County and it needs more help than it has ever been given to it. And I hope that that's one of the areas that y'all will look at. Thank you very much for allowing me to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Axel. We have Mr. Willie Golden.
Yes, I'll leave tonight. I already need... I admit, I had, I had three complaints. I put it on the agenda, but I, but I'm at this stage, so I just go down the line. First is my utility bill. It's been over four hundred dollars last year. And to top it off, it was five hundred dollars in December. And I have a problem with that. And the other, and I talked with the city manager, one of the members. And they told me, so I, and I went to him and I told him I said, and he said he worked out a plan, but man, I believe it. But I'm, I wanna express myself. He said that I could pay on the bill, pay my bill and he'll set up a plan. Because I told him, I said, "When we, when we set up a bill," I said, "That's just like a share property. I'm gonna never get paid because you add, you add, you add fee to the bill that's already paid for." And that was a little process and I, I did catch up with that because when I pay on the bill, it gonna be about forty or fifty dollars. And so that's, that's add more and he, and he, he'll issue it then. And I thanked him, but he bought on it. City manager gonna work with, work with us on that. He said, "Well, I'll set up your plan to pay the bill." See, I don't mind paying my bills, but I'm just, I just wanna be fair with myself about paying the bill because I don't have that kind of money to just give away. And I don't see, and I, and like I say, I talked with him, the mayor directly to him and he seemed to be fair about it. And I'm glad that he did because not only, not only himself, a whole lot of people are dealing with that, like bill, money. And like I say, I stay by myself. I don't be home that much. My utilities, all my service is fixed because I made sure that. And I have a problem with a bill over four hundred dollars. I mean, I mean, I, I, I know, I know the cost of living is gonna be high, but let's, let's, now let's just be fair about it. And I guess I'm only a loud person, that's a lot of folk have a problem with that. But I'll tell you, and like I said, that's not fair. I said, "We, we not in that, we, we in a rural area." And I have a problem that anybody bill, bill over four hundred dollars a month and, and if you, if you wanna check it out, y'all got the record, look back there from last year to December. And to top it off, it was five hundred and something dollars. I got a problem with that. Okay. I will hold up town, I got two more since we here. The young lady, she touched on about the sign. I have people come into town, they don't know where it's at. They don't know where I live, but they don't even know where the sign is from in there. They don't know where the, they don't even know where our hospital is. And every time I go to, they got signs. And if, I, I say that, if they don't have enough people to put the signs up behind something because that's crucial when you come to town and you don't even know where you at. I, I, I barely know and that'd be the most of my life. And I have a problem with that. Now, the third one, I'll say, it really disturbed me when the city came and cut down some trees on Shoemaker. That's, that's private property. And don't nobody know who told them, I'd like to know. They cut that, they cut the trees off, off, off the church property. And those trees was, we have activities out there for the church and we go up under the trees from time to time. But now...
Mr. Golden, let me, let me address that right now before you go on. The trees were on city property. There was a miscommunication with that. City manager Burns was brought to his attention, went and spoke with your pastor about it and we made arrangements and I will personally, Mayor Dennett will personally replace those trees. I will have them paid for and installed on your property. So that's no longer an issue right now.
Okay, but...
All right, thank you. Okay. Is that your third one, your minute's up?
I, oh, oh...
Your, your time's up.
I was a little...
Okay, thank you.
Will you take care of the last, the first two?
Everything that's been said tonight is taken into consideration. Thank you, thank you. Next we have Mr. George Rhimes.
I'm George Ross Rhimes. I'm not, I don't live here, but I do have property here in, you know, this county. And I just wanna say that I record with the Get To Free Press thirty-five, from twenty-five to thirty-five cities at meetings such as this. And from what I, I was, I was riding about off this evening and I heard on that, that one, this meeting was going on. Otherwise, I would not have been here. And I thank God for that because I wanted to be here. I graduated from here. And I just wanna say to the council, I appreciate this meeting as the members of Get To Free Press who travel all these cities. You're doing a great job. Law enforcement for maintaining order, you did a great job here tonight. And to you, the public, you did a great job too. Because in many cities that I go to, it's total chaos. And I don't believe that we serve, I'm retired military now. I don't think that we serve some suffering, bleeding, dying for this great nation. This is what I believe our nation should be a reflection of. Thank y'all everyone.
Mr. Rhimes was the last one that signed up. Before we go on, is there anybody? Yes.
Hi, uncle, council, council, um, men and chairman. My name is Toni Brooks. I've lived in Brooks County for forty-five years. I've worked in county government for twenty-eight years. And I sat and I've listened to a lot of complaints and a lot of issues. And I sat and I've listened to a lot of complaints and a lot of issues everybody have asked. And these are the same issues and questions that we've dealt with, and they've never been answered. There's always been working promises, we gonna do this, we gonna do that. And the campaign for this election was, it's time for a change. You got many elderly people getting eight hundred dollar utility bills. They can't afford that. And like you said, if that new system you come in, you don't pay your bill, and you turn their utilities off, I personally am gonna call the state. And I'm gonna just put this out there. You can install them new meters, you can put in new water meters, but I'm not gonna call them out. But I lived at thirteen oh one South Jefferson Street, and my light bill was more than my rent. And my landlord and me went to the city hall, and they sent, they sent this guy out there to check. He climbed a pole, turned the electricity off, and the meter was still running. Now see, installing new meters on a house ain't gonna work when you got a rigged on pole. I have worked all my life, since I was fifteen, two jobs. And I think I speak for a lot of working people. You know, when they get paid, they don't want to have to take, you can't pay your rent, you can't pay your mortgage if you gotta pay an eight or nine hundred dollar utility bill. You know, we talked about the new system, the new billing system, but nobody's talked about what we're gonna do to lower costs. He talked about, we need to install this, install that. I live in a house that was totally renovated before I moved in. I have three grandchildren, nobody live in that house now but me. My husband's on the road. I, I know utility bills should have been ready today because as of the twentieth of the last month when I came in, and I think this complaint, this guy was talking about somebody raising, saying about their bill, that was me. Because I think he was in there, that was me. Because when she told me the billing cycle, wasn't nobody home but maybe two and a half weeks on that billing cycle, I was in Augusta. And when she showed me my meter reading for the bill that I'm gonna get this month, it was higher than that one. And I was in Augusta. So what are we gonna do about that? That's the problem. Me sitting down talking to Mr. Burns, I don't have that. Because see, Mr. Burns, like, I don't have that power. Because I ask, because I got, if everybody know me, I got my, I don't care. But I said, let me leave before I say something that I don't need to say. Mr. Burns didn't come out his office. He sat there. I was standing to wait to talk to him.
Say, girl.
And someone spoke about, he spoke about the way downtown look, right about now, we ain't worried about what downtown look. We need jobs. We need industry. We need to get our people working so we can pay these eight hundred dollar light bills. Because you got all these buildings sitting here and nothing's going on. The only employer you have is what, Crown, the city, the school system. You have, people have to commute. You have people in the city that put that commute over hour a day. I myself did a commute because y'all would hire me. I worked for, for Brooks County, NRCS, for seven years. And I guess my mouth was too big, so they ended my job with, with the whole blessing. I didn't miss a day of work. Thomas County hired me on the spot, and I was there twenty-three years. And I did my job right. And that's why I say, being involved, you're not gonna get a change until you listen to your constituents and make a change. Because if we don't start attending these meetings every month, there's not gonna be a change. Because their decision should be based on what you feel like. They're, they gonna have to make decisions sometimes that we don't like, and they have no control of. But it seems like telling us about a building system ain't gonna help my light bill. And putting that meter reading system ain't gonna help my light bill, not if they can cut it off on a pole and that meter still going. You see what I'm saying?
I can't forget that.
And I just wanted to address another thing about roads. What and who determines what roads are paid first? Listen, Ms. Williams spoke about Wester Street. Today, right now, the road, I'm not sure I've been held my life, the road that sits by McDonald's is currently being paid. So that road, they need to be paid. They should have been paid when that, that road was, when that scene was built. Like I said, please.
I'll, I'll take the road by McDonald's and address that for you. That business brought jobs. The man invested two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in building. Wait, now let you talk, now let you talk. He, he invested in that, he pays fifteen thousand dollars in property taxes every year. His utility bill runs around four to six thousand dollars every month. Now wait, I let, I let, I let you talk. That road was coming apart, and it was right there on Main Street where a few people from out of town come through quickly to stop and eat, and then they're having to turn off on that road that you couldn't even drive down. I felt like for somebody who's made that big of an investment in our community, we need to take care of what's beside him, make it look good. That's how you attract more jobs, is your county looks good and you show that you can pay. That's how you do it. And that's why that road was a change order on the last L-Me project to do the paving and fix that street. There was also a water main leak in it that was fixed just before the, before he put the basin there to pay. But that, that's how, that's how that one block of Wester Street got on there.
Mayor, please, may I make the approval vote for that?
No, no, let's, let's go on. We need, we've got some things that we need to do. Let's go on. Like I said, this council, things are happening now, we're voting on the previous council, the grants, the roads, as far as what was being paid and all that, it's not a decision of this council. It was, it was there, it's something that was already in place. And once you apply for grants and get the money, it has to be earmarked or said it's gonna pay for that, it has to go for that, or you have to pay it back. So going forward, we'll have these kind of discussions, we want you to come in and tell us about your roads, take us to your roads, show us there, so when we make these decisions, we can prioritize the roads that need to be improved. When I was out campaigning, I saw a lot of roads too that are, that are personal to me that I feel need to be improved. But like I said, going forward, that's the whole point of having these meetings because we want to know what you're feeling. We want it in an open forum, not just might come and whisper into one person to another one, because collectively, we make decisions, not individually, but collectively we do. So I thought it all but proper that collectively, we hear your concerns. You know, we were citizens first, and we're always citizens, but last year, I sat on the same side of the table that you're sitting on, had the same concerns. If you remember last January, I went before the council and had the same concern, an eight hundred dollar light bill, and my concern was, how are these citizens gonna make a decision between, do they eat, do they, do they have lights, or do they get their medicine? That's always been my concern. We have talked about it as a council, that's why we want to hear it from you. And now, we're gonna have a little discussion openly and discuss some things and some immediate, we feel relief that we can give you. A lot of the things you have to realize that we're locked in because decisions were made before we got here. Decisions were made before we got here. We can't change them overnight, but we have met and talked to some people, Mr. Burns and I have been meeting all week, and last weekend, I've gone to Atlanta, I went to Albany yesterday, and I've talked to other people, other cities, and I've got some solutions, and so, or, or mandates, I call it, because it's not a long-term fix right now, but we're working towards a long-term fix, that we can give some immediate relief right now because that's the ultimate goal. I love equipment, I want everybody to stay in equipment, I want us to be happy, I want us to be thriving and growing, but to offer some type of relief now, and that was the whole thing. Come talk to us. We want you to know that, that you're not, this is not following deaf ears, we're listening, we're concerned. We are concerned, and that was the whole thing, that we're working off of somebody else's agenda, somebody else's budget, and some of the decisions that were made from the previous. But that's the way government works. It will take a little time, be patient with us, keep an open dialogue, talk to us, let us know, you know, you're angry, you know, but, but understand, this is nothing personal, some of this stuff, our hands are tied, and we're mandated to do, you know, the state's looking at us, and, and other things we have to do. And when grant money comes down, I would love if I could take money from here and put it there. Doesn't happen that way. It does not happen that way.
A few years ago, this is where your voting counts, on this road issue, the tax, this district then passed that paving tax. That was money for this community to do roads with. It was dedicated for the roads. Like in Valdosta, whatever, they were gonna help you fix your roads. You all been passing. It, it, it plays into this, this road issue. City equipment don't have enough tax base. You gotta get grant money to certain things to make it happen. But if you didn't pass that tax, that, that would have been more money that could have came here if they not passed.
Didn't pass, you mean we didn't vote on it? What, we didn't pass?
This, this, this regional, this region that you in, then voted to pass that, that bill that would provide the tax money for small communities, rural communities like Brooklyn. That was money that was, that you didn't get that other communities around the state of Georgia.
We understand that, but just because someone come in and opened a business.
Man, I understand, I understand.
Okay, we're gonna go on with our meeting. Next on the agenda, we're gonna talk about the upcoming February and March bills. We're concerned, we verge concerns about that. I went back and I pulled the calendar of weather, because that's, that's what it's based on, the unusual weather that we had this year. In January of two thousand seventeen, these are all highlighted days, there was only five out of thirty-one days in January that the temperature fell below thirty-five degrees. Only five out of thirty-one this time last year. Two thousand eighteen, look at this calendar. Twenty-three out of the thirty-one days that we had this past month, the temperature fell before, below thirty-five degrees. When it gets below, when it gets below thirty-five degrees, the demand on electricity and staying warm and all those other things play a part, and that's what happens with our utility bills. The colder it got, the more we were trying to keep warm, and we had more colder days. We looked at that, we talked about that, and we said, you know, given the fact, and you've heard some of you say, and whoever said the bills are out, the bills aren't out. Whatever somebody say is speculation, so bills are not out. They're not, they're not calculated yet, and they're not out. And a reason for that is, we wanted an opportunity to hear from you and possibly discuss some things that we might be able to do to change the rate of this hard bill that you're anticipating getting. That, that was the whole, the whole point on that. On Tuesday, Mr. Burns and I met with the city of electric company, that's a, like, it's a, it's a company that comes down, and we have MEAC, which is our company that we, we do our electricity with, which is compatible with Georgia Power, then we have a company that comes down, and what they do is, they do the business part of it. They tell us, you know, what does it cost for us to have an electric company? As far as the insurance, the, the trucks, the drivers, the, the power lines, the upgrade, the, not the upgrade, the up care, and all things like that. They give us a ballpark number and say, this is what it costs, you know, and this is what you buy it for. You buy it from MEAC, this is what it is. So the difference between the two, in order for us to break even, is what we would have to pass on as a rate charge. The problem has been, for the last fourteen years, there had not been an increase, or it should have been a gradual increase as economy got, things are costing more, it should have been passed on. It didn't happen. Last year, there was a big increase in the, the rate that you were paying for utility bills. We all felt it, it was like, you know, going from a Toyota to Cadillac in one year, you know, you're paying that, the extra insurance money on it. We felt that. Not taking into account now with all this unusual bad weather, and this is just tip the iceberg, we haven't even hit winter yet, that it's gonna get worse for us and our economy as far as billing, but the demand is there. If you cold, you, you don't try to keep warm by whatever means necessary. So I like to open the discussion up, and one of the things that Mr. Burns and I talked with the gentleman about was, what can we do? You know, what can the city do? And I believe in sometimes to go forward, you have to step backwards. What can we do to give some kind of relief to our customers, and that's our citizens that provide the electricity, and not fold? You know, when we break even, or, or, really the suggestion, or the figures he gave us, we're gonna take a loss. Which sometimes, like I said, you have to fall back in order to go forward, that we would be willing to take a loss in the amount of revenue, the amount of money we take in that offsets how much we have to pay off on these bills temporarily, so it gives time for us as a city to regroup from all the things that happened, mothers, mother nature, all this cold weather and all those other things that have happened, to regroup so that we can start moving forward and get a better system in place, upgrading. And when we talk about the upgrades, the upgrade is not so we can have the access to go and cut your bill off, that's not it. The upgrade is so that we have the modern technology that's recording your bill so you're only paying for what you're using. We hear complaints all the time where, oh, this wasn't working, that wasn't working. We need everybody to have the same level plan. You know, we need to bring it up to the twentieth century, you know, and as far as water, billing, sewer, and, and lights, and make sure that we're getting accurate readings, that you're only getting billed with, and then what happens with that? It tells you if like, Monday, you start realizing there's been a speed, a, a, a peak in your usage, go check something in your house. It gives you that alert. You don't have to wait till you get this bill and you run it out later like, wow, I didn't realize that, that I was using an extra five thousand dollars, five thousand gallons of, of water. It gives you, it's kind of a, a check and balance type thing that'd be put in place. But in time, like I said, that's going down the line, we're thinking about, what can we do? What can we offer you today that's gonna give you some relief until we can get all this worked out? Opposed to what you might be feeling, we're here because we work for you. We want this to work. We want this to work. So I want to open up the discussion, we're in another part now, we're, we're, we're in another part now. I'm at the point now, and on our agenda, we're gonna discuss our February and our March billing. My lead into that was the weather. The weather's a big indicator. With these twenty-three days of cold weather in January, you can imagine what your light bill is gonna look like when you get it next week. That, that's an indicator right there. So with that in mind, I would like to, to talk with the council about some alternates, or some things that we might be able to do that can give some relief, not just for next month's bill, but for two months' bill. Because one month is, is not gonna dig you out, but I think, but Mr. Ragsdale said about the, the two months' bill, that we can do it, but with the understanding it's gonna come at a, a loss for the city for revenue. But I think at this point, as opposed to losing customers and people having to make, you know, decisions as far as their, their life-altering situations, I think at that point, the city needs to take the vote, you know, at that point. We're not thinking any, any questions, no, no comments, it's our meeting now, we're doing that part. So, meeting with Mr. Ivy, he suggested, if you look in your package, council, that we could do a temporary residential rate decrease on our, and this would be for the amount that we charge for the utilities used. It's not, doesn't change what you're doing, like, like some of you said, what you use in your house, the, the number of kilowatts, that's, that's your, only you can control that. If you cut things off or whatever, you control that. The only part that we can control as a council is the amount that we charge you for what you use. And I've got a graph, if somebody wants to look at it later, you're welcome to look at it, that he worked up, that if we did a two and a half cent reduction per kilowatt, that the savings it would give for the, the citizens on the bills, let me give you an I use five thousand kilowatts. That's a lot. At the current rate, with five thousand kilowatts, my light bill, this is electric, this is electric only, not sewer water, would be six hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty If we were able to give the five, the two point five percent rate reduction, my bill would drop to five hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. If we were able to give the five, the two point five percent rate reduction, my bill would drop to five hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. It's a lot of money, only because, guess what, I use five thousand, so I use a lot. On the same token, if somebody else used twelve hundred kilowatts. At the current rate, it would be two hundred and eleven dollars. At the new proposal rate, it'd be a hundred and seventy-one dollars. This is the only way, given the fact, if we kept going, they're just individual in each bill, across the board, that everyone would see some type of relief. We wouldn't only do it, I'm suggesting we not even do it, for just one month, we do it for two months. So that just dig you out of January a little bit, it also helps you and hopefully, in the, um, this month, we don't have as many, um, bad weather days. It helps you along through February and then we'd go back to our new rates and give somebody adjustments. That's the only way, talking with them and we've talked to several different people, that we can offer something. And I think, I'm excited about this, because this is the first time since I've been a citizen and, um, in equipment that anybody has come in for the board has said, other than deducting the four dollars and fifty-seven late fee, that they've been, that they would say, let's look at the rates. Let's do something across the board that will make a significant difference in your bill and give you an opportunity to move on into the, the, um, the next cycle, which will be your spring cycle. Um, that's one of the options there, um, right now, I think that's the only option we have, we could reduce that, roll back some of the, um, what's I was gonna say, just roll back the rate. So we charge less for it, take a hit for two months, give everybody an opportunity to get through this bad weather and all these, you know, natural things that have, have happened. Along with that, like you said, and everyone's attest to, Mr. Burns has been wonderful as far as making, working out payment, um, agreements, payment arrangements and all that. We're not convinced of, of cutting anybody off or putting them without utilities. That's not it, we're trying to work with you on that. And I can't think of any other way, um, board members, any other way, any other suggestions on that? Anybody? Any comments on that?
Yeah, about the only way you can, you can get some relief is to do a, 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 obviously, is do a rate reduction. And the mayor and city manager have talked to the electric cities of Georgia, people who've helped us a lot with our budget. And from what I'm understanding from that conversation, they're telling us that we can do this on a temporary basis and not, you know, just completely crash our budget. Um, I personally, um, I don't, I don't wanna see us do the two months right now. I would, I would prefer we do one month, see how it impacts our budget. Holding that, if we wanted to do another month, do it July and August, when you gonna have another peak. You know, rather than do two here and not be able to do anything in July and August, that, that's my thinking. That would also fall into next year's budget, so we would already know how that's gonna affect us and be able to plan for it. Uh, that's, that's my suggestion, I, I would like for us to do the one month, the two and a half cent per kilowatt reduction now. And then, then for the next bill, go back to our, our current rate.
Well, my suggestion, I think that we, uh, we don't do too much, uh, we'll give people something to, we'll give y'all something to go on now. Y'all need to fix, it's not gonna totally fix the problem, but at least y'all, y'all see something that we're trying to do. Um, we trying to fix the problem now, we're not, um, we're not promised June or July. We need a, a fix for, uh, my suggestion is that we, uh, go two months, you know, first two months.
Okay, um, I'm going a little bit off the record, because like I said, I'm here to serve you. Um, I just wanna personally ask, how many of you would like us, would, would, would prefer having a two-month reduction now as opposed to what? Mr. Rachel, you want to have it now? Okay, how many of you would like to split it up and have one now and have one in the summer? I just, the second one was how many of you would like to have it one, if you had a relief, you had a choice, you wanna have one now and then one in the summer? As opposed to two now in the winter months?
I think August because a lot of parents, in August, it's time for the kids to go back and see, that's when the light bill be really, really high.
Okay, I just, I just see that as a personal point of information for me, because I just wanted to see, because we actually come here because I wanted your feedback, I wanted to know and I wanted you to know that we're working on this. We're trying all we can, I said, we're meeting weekly and we're, we're trying to find out what other cities are doing that are in this situation and how they're getting out of it. Um, the key to this is gonna be economic development, excuse me. It's gonna be economic development, we're gonna work really, really hard on bringing industry here, the more industry we bring here, the, the better relief it is on you as residential, um, consumers. And that's what we're gonna really work on, um, doing that, but, um, that was, that was the whole concern with that. Um, we've discussed our February and March billing, which was item number six on our agenda. Do I hear a motion to make any change or anything? Okay, I hear a motion by Ms. Maddie Nellums, that we take a two point five, um, cent reduction on the residential rates for the next two months. Do I hear a second? I have a second, if I miss a little smart question.
Uh, just residential, right?
Just residential. Okay, um, no further questions? Call for vote, all in favor? All against?
Just, if I wanna make it on the record, I was only voting this way because I wanted to do it, I'm not a party.
Alright, it passes. So, understand and take this from this meeting, that this council tonight voted to adjust your utilities, that will be your light only part for residential. We're gonna reduce the rate by two and a half percent, two, excuse me, two point, two and a half cents. Doesn't sound like much, but it really does make a difference on your bill, we're gonna do it for two months, at a loss for the city. But in hopes that we can recuperate and we can, we can move forward and plan other things that's gonna help and make a long-term solution for the, the high utility bills that we've been seeing. Look, uh, be able to look out, that we're having people come in, gonna be doing some type of, um, classes and things like that, or being energy efficient, some things that you can do. We can't control what you use in your house, but we're gonna try to provide people that can help you in ways you probably hadn't thought of to reduce the amount of water that you're using in your house, that will reduce your bill. Um, also from this meeting, taking effect that, that we're here, Mr. Burns is here, talk to him, um, come and, and be open, talk to him. He's the one that, that can sit down with you and help you plan out some type of payment plan and things like that, um, we're open for suggestions. Um, was this meeting beneficial for you guys to come together, would you come, come in together on issues to talk? Yes, okay, I, 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 we wanna be transparent, we wanna know what's going on, we want you to know what's going on, we want you to be able to have input because we know that we're acting on your immediate concerns. All this information that you've given us, we've taken notes, we're gonna pass it on. Look for upcoming information on the different committees, there'll be, uh, form, that we have formed, that will be addressing your issues, that you can come to and talk to. And they will bring it before the council, um, just give us some time, we're working, I promise you, we're working. Um, with that, and that being said, we're gonna conclude, but if you wanna stay around and have conversations, we welcome that. Um, our next meeting is Tuesday at, um, seven o'clock. And the announcement is, we're moving to a bigger venue, we're gonna be at our old. It's the old city hall, we used to have court down across from Lee Pickles, we're renovating that now, so we're gonna have more seating there. Come join us, be informed, come listen to what's going on. I'll have the agenda posted by Friday on the outside of the door at the city hall, come by and see what's on there and just stay informed. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Maddie Nellums, do I hear a second? You didn't mean to have adjourned yet. I have a second. Uh, do I question? All in favor? To none.
What's your name? Raleigh Lark. Now, look at here, look at here, look at here, look at here. This is Raleigh Lark, and what's your name? Edgar Lark, we went to school together and, 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 and he, he thought I forgot you then. You know when you shoot bottles, right? And, and, and Rocky had to go home. The only president that we used is George Hayden, you know, George Hayden was with us. I just wanted to get us on film there, bro, and open this on YouTube, hey, this is Russ Gant Equipment. I record over here, but these my schoolmates, man. And thank you, brother, for recording us. That's alright.
This is the Get to Free Press and we report what others ignore. This is your First Amendment right to know without quiet outs from a controlled news media quiet out network. And we are located in Valdosta, Georgia, and we are here to inform, educate, and persuade if necessary. Always keep that in mind. Moreover, I wanna say to you that as a community, state, nation, and world, we are not who we claim to be, but who we prove ourselves to be over a given period of time. And if we are a liar, time will tell. And if we are a racist or a hater, time will tell. And our righteous and holy God already know. So you are only fooling yourselves. Again, the Get to Free Press, I'm George Foster Ranks.